Every election day I'm gonna... I'm at the phone.
Did you... Did you come to me there or something about... About this stuff tonight?
All right, we're live, man.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, it sure did.
Yeah, I wasn't happy about it.
You didn't get one?
I got one, but I wasn't happy about getting one.
You want one?
There was two recently. Uh, so one, yeah, I've been out in there and then, um, from sixteen, I don't know what it was, uh, two books there. And I'm actually talking about that. And I'm just talking about it too. So they didn't ask. Well, they didn't vote, you know, more usual than what they actually, they didn't have to be very like here and go, well, they got you, so. And they didn't pass them either, they had to wait.
Yeah, everything's on, we're live. Good evening, everyone, I'd like to call, uh, this December fifth, twenty seventeen, meeting of the Union County Planning Board to order. And I hope everybody's got their agenda in front of them. First, uh, point of business would be to, uh, uh, appoint, uh, Charles Griffin, a voting member. Would ask a motion to make that. Thank you, Robert.
Second.
Second, thank you, Everett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Charles, we need your help tonight, okay? Uh, on the additions and additions to the agenda, uh, does anybody have any? If not, I'd like to make one. Under, uh, point eight, planning board comments, I'd like to discuss, uh, the discussion on the Truffle Plaza. For those of you that were at the eleven seven meeting, uh, through Brian, I was asked to attend the Board of Commissioners' meeting last night. And I'd, a couple of things we'd like to discuss and get some feedback and input on, uh, uh, from this board. And then ask comments from Brian on his thoughts, et cetera. Is that okay with everybody? We have a motion to approve?
Same.
Okay, thank you, second. Thank you, Robert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we'll add eight A down on that, uh, Brian, thank you. And I appreciate Brian, uh, giving some leadership on that earlier today. You should have received in your, your mail or email, uh, the November seventh, twenty seventeen minutes. Would ask, uh, if you have not seen those, please take a look at it, review it, and ask a motion to approve or a motion to amend as you see fit from any of the board.
I move to approve.
Move to approve, thanks, Charles. Have a second? Thanks, Patrick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, going on to number, uh, five, discussion of the meeting date for January twenty eighteenth. Brian?
Yes, sir, so your, um, regularly scheduled meeting actually is in conflict for when the Board of Commissioners would normally meet because of the holiday. They will typically meet on the Tuesday following, um, their Monday, Monday's actually a holiday, and that would actually fall during your meeting. So we were wanting to get some input from the board on when you would like to reschedule your meeting for. And it's really up to you, I think sometimes in the past, you've done the following, um, Tuesday. It's really whatever's convenient for the board.
What is the pleasure of the board? It does not matter to me.
I vote for the following week.
Do what, Robert?
I vote for the following week.
Following week?
What's the date?
That would be January the ninth.
January ninth?
It was on the Tuesday, that would be January the ninth.
Okay, motion, uh, has been made to, uh, consider, uh, January the ninth as the meeting date.
So moved.
So moved, thank you, uh, Patrick, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Russell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Brian, since we're on that, uh, what we may wanna do is make a note, if we can, to this, that, uh, if we have an election in November next year, and it falls on the planning board, that we may wanna move that.
What we'll do is, if you don't mind, we'll bring your schedule back as a whole for the year. We'll look and see if there's anything that's a conflict.
That'd be great. Okay.
And we'll have you go ahead and, and look at the whole schedule and then make any changes at one time. Now, of course, there's always something that could happen during the year.
Right.
But we'll, we'll bring you the whole schedule for next, two thousand eighteen, let you look at that.
Is that okay with the board?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Uh, okay, now move to the second week of January. Okay, item number six, U D O proposed text change for section twenty five, point oh two oh dash C fifteen and twenty five dash one table of uses. Public, civic, and institutional use category. Brian?
All right, so you had at your, um, your desk, um, a revised, um, section of the ordinance. And, and the reason for that is, we had not received our comments back from legal yet. Um, they did make a few minor tweaks, um, actually, and they made a lot of sense, and I'll go over those. If you, if you recall, uh, when we met, um, before about, uh, having major utilities within, um, light industrial and heavy industrial, one of the concerns was also that, uh, some of these, uh, alternative or renewable energy, uh, projects are very land intensive. But they were all lumped into the major utility category, so there was no way at the time to sort of distinguish between, you know, a water tower versus a solar farm that takes up hundreds of acres. And so, uh, we brought a text change and to, to the board to consider, uh, major utilities being removed from heavy industrial, light industrial, because those are areas we were trying to protect as far as land available for industrial uses. Uh, the board, um, actually, uh, tabled that matter and asked us to look into pulling wind and solar, renewable out, and coming back with some suggestions on that. And then you also talked about, um, whether or not, um, major utilities were appropriate in the highway corridor district. That text change did go forward to the Commissioners, 'cause the Commissioners actually requested that it come forty. So even though the planning board didn't take any action, per the, our ordinance and per the general statutes, it can go up to the Commissioners forty-five days after you've taken no action on it, and they can take action if they want to. They did. They went ahead and approved the text change to remove major utilities from heavy industrial and light industrial uses. And that was really more of an, of an issue of the land intensive uses. We've since come back and been able to work with legal and come up with a method of actually pulling out those land intensive utility uses and creating sort of a, its own category. And that's what you have here. Um, you have a, um, a section that we've created, so in your, in your ordinance, on, on page twenty five dash ten, there are, um, definitions of different uses. And in this particular category, it's twenty five point oh two oh C, number fifteen. This has to do with, as Chairman, um, the Chairman said, public, civic, and institutional use category. And specifically, number fifteen is the utility or public service facility. Now, in the, in the ordinance, before any kind of amendment, there were only two items there. There was minor, there was major. And under major, you had wind and solar and other types of, of land intensive, um, facilities. We are proposing to create a category actually called renewable energy facilities. And in those category, and that would be number C, these are facilities that utilize renewable energy, um, including without limitation, solar energy, uh, wind, falling water, the heat of the earth, geothermal energy systems, and plant materials, biomass. Renewable energy facilities produce power, heat, or mechanical energy by converting those resources either to electricity or to motive power. And you'll notice above that, under major category, what, what has occurred is that, um, uh, we've actually taken out, um, the, the wind, the solar, and the renewable energies, it says excluding now, that's been removed. And, and we've made it clear that renewable is also not a minor. It, it's, it's its own category. And really what, uh, um, our, our legal department did is, originally, I think we had this titled, alternative energy facilities. But they, they found that we actually had a definition in our ordinance for renewable energy, which made sense. So they just said, let's just call it renewable energy facility. Um, they made a few little changes to some of the, uh, language, but essentially, um, they were recommending that we classify it as renewable energy. So, do you have any questions about that language change and what that would actually do as far as the language goes? I'll get into the table of uses in just a minute, but I just wanna find out if you have any questions about the language itself.
Does the board have any concerns or comments on the language?
It doesn't specify the size of the property at all that would be...
It does not. It, it merely indicates the type of facility. So renewable, meaning if it's a, a wind farm, it would matter whether it was five acres or five hundred acres. It would be a renewable facility. Same thing with solar, would matter whether it was five or five hundred. It's, it, the size is not relevant.
So it could be a private home?
No, sir, now, understand something, these, these are under utility or public service.
Public service, okay.
A private home will fall under a utility category.
I'd like to clarify.
If you put something on your roof, that's not a utility. That's not, that doesn't fall in that definition.
So it would have to be a business engaged in...
They're actually selling power really back to the, um, the power company for consumption. Now, you know, there are some situations where homeowners can some, sell a little bit of their power, but that's not, that's still getting, not classified as utility.
And that would, the same would, would be true for businesses that use alternative energy, that sells...
That is correct, yes, sir. So if, again, if you had a factory and you put, uh, solar panels on your factory, that would not qualify under this.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Do we need a motion to accept this?
Well, I, I would, I wanna talk about now, the actual table of uses. I just wanna make sure we had the, we were comfortable, at least with the language, if you had questions with the language. So you also received the table of uses, um, you know, a revised section of that. And this is important because now that we've actually pulled renewable energy sources out and made them their own category, well, we also have to define where they will be appropriate as far as districts go. So essentially, what has been recommended is that renewable energy facilities, if you look down, um, about middleway, you'll see some green text there. It's been added as the category. It would be a special use permit only within the R A two hundred, um, zoning district, and it would not be allowed in any of the other districts. And that, essentially, um, we talked with our legal staff, and they said that that is appropriate, that you can have a use that is only allowed by special use in a certain district. 'Cause that was a concern we had. We, did it have to be used by right somewhere or not? Um, and, and our legal staff said, no, um, as long as it's available, it doesn't have to be a use by right. Now, what you also notice is that we're recommending that you go back and you put major utility back in light industrial and heavy industrial. The reason we're recommending that is, the, the real concern had to do with land intensive uses. We, we've pretty much taken that concern away at this point in time. You know, so things like water towers and substations would now be allowed to be utilized in heavy industrial, light industrial, which really aren't the issue. The issue were the land intensive uses. And that, that is, again, also recommended.
Just curious, why is it not allowed in anything but R A two hundred? It looks like it, there's no allowance for it to be anywhere but R A two hundred.
That's right. Well, essentially, there's a limited amount of property that's actually zoned R A two hundred in the county, which would require rezoning. So that would actually require that the Commissioners be involved in the decision of rezoning a piece of property.
Okay, but why would it not be allowed in, for example, like a heavy, heavy industrial or...
Well, the, the reason for heavy industrial is exactly the reason why we, uh, we brought it to you, because it's land intensive and you would actually be consuming land in heavy industrial that should be used for more industrial purposes, because it's land intensive. Uses like water tanks and substations are not generally land intensive, they're relatively small. These uses take up quite a few acres when you put them in.
And just because it was law, heavy industrial, they cannot by right be able to utilize that land, it'll take a special use?
The, it, it, at this point, if this is how it was passed, that would be correct. They would not be able to put a solar farm on a heavy industrial zoned piece of property. And currently, that's how it is now, because the ordinance was changed, Commissioners did actually change the regulations. They removed, um, major utilities from H I and L I, which effectively says that no wind or solar facility can go in H I or L I. But it also effectively prevents water towers, substations, those things from also going into heavy industrial. So currently, that's how the ordinance is now. That was the text change that went to the board, that the board recently approved. If this were to go through, you would put back those uses, water tanks, substations, those types of things, back in heavy industrial, light industrial, but you would not have solar and wind in those districts.
So if somebody wanted to do a small, let's say they had, I don't know, ten acres of land, and they wanted to do a small, um, hydro plant, that, just because it happens to be on a, on a river or whatever, they would be prohibited from doing that based on this classification?
They'd have to do a rezoning. They'd actually have to rezone the property.
I can shave the benefit up.
But, and, and I'm, I want to, I wanna stress to you that, you know, the, the concern that was, that was brought to staff is that, that, that essentially, it is nearly impossible to turn down a wind or a solar facility as a special use permit. Because they have, pretty much have all their evidence and testimony in line. And the only way to turn it down is for someone to present evidence and testimony in opposition, and that's difficult to do. So oftentimes, as soon as they apply, they're gonna get it. And the concern was that there is no way really to actually mitigate whether they come or don't come. And so that was what was expressed to us, so like, how do we have the ability to possibly decide, yes, we want it, or no, we don't want it? Because at, at, before, if you look at it, major utilities were a special use permit in every single district, with the exception of H I. It was a by right use in H I. So, again, because it is difficult to turn something down when they have all their evidence and testimony put in place, essentially, you were, you were guaranteeing that they were going to have that facility in one of those districts. And that was the concern that was raised to us.
So you're saying that, basically, you, you just wanted the ability to say no if you wanted to?
I, I, I think that was the concern. The concern is, is that the, the, the Commissioners would like to have the ability to decide, is this an appropriate use in that zoning district? And right now, they don't have that ability. It's like a rezoning. When a rezoning comes to, to you for recommendation, and then to the board, the board has the ability to say yes or no. Well, right now, they don't have that ability to say yes or no. And I think that was the biggest concern.
And if you put in infrastructure for a heavy industrial, for plants, factories, facilities such as that nature, and somebody would come in, utilize all the infrastructure for one project, everything the county has spent and the city has spent, would be basically null and void. So there'd have be no denial. At least this, you can have some say so on where, where this is gonna go.
That's...
And it's not gonna go in light or heavy industrial.
That is absolutely true, yes.
That's the gist of the issue.
It is the gist, and it's also the, the gist that the Commissioners, I think, i- if approved, would have some ability to decide if other places in the county are appropriate as well. I mean, you take, for instance, the one that was on Rocky River Road in Doster. That's a four hundred acre site. That's a very large site. Well, I mean, that's fine, but there's really no way to turn it down. I mean, it was very difficult for the neighbors actually come out with any evidence that it's not a use that could go there. Um, and I, and I think the Commissioners have looked at that and said, well, you know, we'd like to be able to decide, is that a true use of those properties?
You know, aren't many of these, like, solar farms and wind farms, aren't they typically like a twenty-year property lease? They're not actually buying much of this property, are they? Are they now starting...
It's kind of a hodgepodge, but I think you're right, it's usually a lease. And, and whatever that lease structure is, I couldn't tell you if it's twenty or thirty years. But, yes, there's usually a timeline for a lease, it's rare that they own the property.
So what, what happens at the end of that term? I mean, do, do...
At the end of the term, what's supposed to happen is that the, the solar company, whoever that is, is supposed to basically remove all the panels and all the facilities and actually bring it back to its somewhat original state, which is just bare, bare earth, really. That's what's supposed to happen. Now, again, we just got like five put in place, so we've got twenty plus years to figure out whether or not that's really going to occur.
Because my, my understanding was, and I don't know if it's true of solar farms, but with wind farms, my understanding was at the end of their, their lease period, the landowner is responsible for dealing with the solar towers, and that, that the companies typically don't do anything with them.
If, if you're a landowner, um, you would be smart to structure your lease that they're responsible. Again, we, we can't dictate whether people are smart, you know, negotiators, but it would be smart to negotiate that the company is responsible for moving those facilities.
And obviously, most landowners don't have the capability and the expense is enormous.
Absolutely.
And I was actually, I had, I had owned some land in upstate New York, and was approached, um, by a company, and, and the deal breaker for me was...
I'm not taking it.
I'm not taking it. After twenty years, I don't want the thing. Um, whether it produces energy or not, um, you know, what do you do with this thing?
Absolutely.
And if you've got four hundred acres and you've got, you know, eighty or a hundred of them out there, um, you know, so... But I'm, I'm just curious as to, under a special permit, would we, would we try to structure something that at the end of that period, that, that special permit ends negating the ability to operate, or...
Yeah, so, so a special use permit is actually permanent. It, it's just like any other business that's operating legally, it's a permanent use. Now, what, what is indicated on the special use permit is, when they cease to actually operate the facility, they must remove those panels or the wind, you know, turbines, whatever. They have to remove it within, I, I think we usually give them a thirty days, sixty days, whatever it is, once they've ceased operation of the facility. But if they operate it for fifty years, it can stay there for fifty years.
By the same token, they're like cell tires. They're required by law to be bonded to a certain extent for removal and for demolition, but that's so easily gotten out of. And so, same way with solar. And I understand your trepidations with this, I think you have hit on it. It is the landowner's responsibility after a certain amount of time.
Unfortunately, they sort of get left holding the bag in some cases. And, uh, you know, we, we, we do our best to certainly put those, those things within the special use permit, but it doesn't define who has to do it. So it's not necessarily up to us to say, company A by, A B C has to remove it. 'Cause that company, A B C, might not own it anymore. They may literally sell it somewhere down the line. So it's...
How, how does that impact the special use permit, though, if they're not...
So, a- a- again, the special use permit is about the use, and ultimately, the property owner's responsible. Now, the property owner, again, as I said, should, should negotiate a lease, and that lease should structure what the property owner's responsible for, not responsible on. Ultimately, what's on that property is the responsibility of the landowner, and not necessarily the company.
So putting this into its own category as a special use, forcing it to come to the board, does that give us the ability to stipulate that the only way that we would approve this would be that we need to see a lease between the landowner and, and the operating company that says, you must remove these at the end of the term, or...
I'll be honest with you, I think that would be, um, that would probably be something that our legal department would shy away from. And it is not our responsibility to look at or review leases. I think our responsibility is to...
Well, not, not to, not to necessarily look at or review it, but to know that it's in place.
No, we, we actually, we require that it has to be removed, but we can't require that the company has to remove it. We simply state, as far as the permit goes, that once they cease op, cease operation, it has to be removed. Who removes it? That's between the landowner and the company. So I, I, I don't think our legal department would want us to review a lease to determine whether or not the landowner is truly responsible, if the company's responsible. We're merely gonna say, someone has to remove this facility at the end of its life. That's all we're going to say.
So we, so we can't, so we can't put a condition in there?
I, I, I wish we could, but unfortunately, we, we, it's kind of one of those buyer beware things.
I think it's beneficial to, to have the special designation. Yeah, I, I, and, and I don't know how much R A two hundred land we currently have, but you said it's not very much...
One piece. One piece right now.
But it, it, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't prevent somebody from grouping a bunch of property together, which is what I think they did on Rocky River, right?
Sure. It was one landowner, but I think he had several pieces of property that he included all in that. But it was ultimately one landowner. It does not, um, preclude someone from assembling property and going to the Commissioners for a rezoning request. And again, be- because it requires a rezoning, the Commissioners could decide, is this an appropriate location for them? Do we think this is good? If it is, that's fine, they can rezone it. They don't, then they can say, no, we don't think it's appropriate in this location.
Brian, the R A two hundred is what, five acres or more?
It's about four and a half acres, actually. It's two hundred thousand square feet, which is not quite five acres, like four point six acres.
Well, that's the minimum.
That's a, that's a minimum lot size. If someone wanted to build a residential piece of property, or if they wanted to rezone something, it'd have to be four point... They, they couldn't rezone one acre to a R A two hundred, because they would, they'd not be in conformance at that point.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept this text amendment change as presented to the board.
Okay, we've had a recommendation from Everett that we accept, uh, this change as presented by Brian. Uh, do we have, uh, a s- a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Thank you, Robert. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, good job, Brian, as usual.
Y'all asked good questions, very good question.
Okay.
Thank you, John, you too.
Let's go on to, uh, item number seven, that's a status report. Uh, first, uh, bullet underneath that is a Seacrest short cut small area plan.
We just about, the contracts have been, uh, all finalized, and so we should be, be starting any day now.
Okay, all right.
For both that one and the Marshville U S seventy-four court study, both of those, we're about, got our contract. So we're, got all that legalese out of the way, and so we should be starting up pretty soon.
So based on that, then, what we're saying is possibly January, February, March, we'll start having some reports coming back.
Yes, sir.
Our two representatives, okay? All right, thank you. Uh, C R T P O, Russell, anything there?
Uh, I, I, this year's been real interesting. I, uh, they're, they're talking about a, uh, a rail line from Wilmington to here, which is really cool, I think. It's a, it's gonna be really neat to take a lot of the freight off of, uh, the roads and, and, uh, and I, I'm just real excited about that, and the, the, uh, the, the, some of the... some of the light rail, uh, they're talking about out to the airport from uptown, uh, which is really neat. And, uh, so there's a lot of, lot of things they're talking about and, uh, it's, it's very, you know, that, the meetings, if none of you've ever been, it, it's worth a going and sitting in on it because what they do there is regional and talks about things that's gonna affect our county, cause obviously if they bring a rail from, it'll come right through Union County and, uh, and a lot of freight will come through our county, which is nice and a lot, it's coming through now, but it's on the roads and it's gonna be a, you know, a lot of trains running up and down the road to try to get the freight back and forth, which rather than putting them on a, a flatbed truck, they're gonna haul them on, on, on the rail cars, which will really be nice. And, and it'll be a, they're gonna take the track we have in place and fix it and make it really, and it'll come right through the road. So like I said, I think it'll really be exciting, so.
Good.
I'll keep, keep more notes and then.
Would that be through the, the Waxaw and Mineral Springs track or is that a different track?
It's the one that comes through.
I think that's Norfolk Southern, I think Norfolk Southern goes through Waxaw.
Mm-hmm.
I think the one that Russell's talking about is the CSA.
Yeah, yeah. It should be Rocky River coming through that maybe.
Russell, could we also impose on you, based on, uh, uh, what we had come up last night, uh, any updates you hear on sixteen Providence, north, south?
I don't think there's been much.
If you have anything there, if we could kinda hear that from time to time, cause I think it'll help this entire board.
They talk about bypass and a lot of different things and, you know, like some of the, some of the folks, they, you got a lot of power on the north side pulling for money, a lot of power. And so, you know, we, we're gonna have to fight for what we get out here.
We got you, Russell, so we know you.
Well, yeah, I know, you know, we need our commissioners, we need everybody that's on there to show up.
Yeah.
And be there because the, the north side and it, and it's not bad. I mean, there, there's a lot of power, a lot of money on the north side, but they're, they're hustling to, to get their fair share of everything, so.
Yeah, I was about sixteen, I did wanna tell you a little bit, um, about what's kinda going on for sixteen, why I mean, so there's a discussion with all the municipalities in the county on, uh, what type of pedestrian facilities would invite, uh, facilities they'd like to have on the, you know, as cost associated with that. Right now, there's a discussion on having a sidewalk on one side and a multi-use path on, on the other side. Multi-use path being somewhere between ten and twelve feet, sidewalk usually five or six feet. Um, and then a wide outside shoulder, which we allow for bicyclists, but not necessarily defined a bike lane. There's not been a consensus yet. Everybody's sort of talking about it and deciding, you know, what they support because there's a cost that each jurisdiction will have to pay towards that. DOT requires that when jurisdictions ask for these things, that they have to cost share. And the cost share is based on your population. So, um, the most is usually, I think, a fifty fifty cost share and then the smaller you are in population, it can go down to an eighty, twenty cost share, depends on the population. And that's under discussion right now. Um, I know Bjorn's working with the towns on, on, you know, getting them to define what they want. Um, and then ultimately, the county commissioners are gonna have to weigh in on that and say, yes, we're willing to fund our portion of it. Cause I'll be honest with you, I don't think the county has paid for sidewalks or multi-use paths in the past. So this would be a big first for the county.
Kinda evidence that we don't have.
So that's something they'll have to weigh in on as well. So we'll kinda keep you posted on that right now, but that's where that stands.
Is there any way, uh, because sixteen is so hot right now in everybody's mind, not because I live in Waxaw, but what we saw last night, uh, to have some kind of communicate on the county website as to what's happening on sixteen, so people cannot assume or go on Facebook with false information, i- is that conceivable? Can it be discussed at the proper level?
Staff level, we've been asked by the commissioners to provide some additional information and, and, and we, we don't mind, but we don't want to be seen as taking over a role in CBOT as well. Obviously, CBOT is the project manager for sixteen, not the county. Um, but we can certainly try to put information out there and links to information for people to be able to go to the county commissioner thing. And, and that's, that's all beneficial.
Used to be considered and whatever y'all decide on, you know?
We'll be happy to, to, to work towards putting something out there. And we wanna do that for more than just sixteen, other projects as well.
Be good.
Information out there for all kinds of things that are going on as far as transportation or anything else in, in the county that people can go to the source of that information.
Speaking of other projects, um, is there an updated status on the bypass one that will be open and operable and?
They are, um.
It seems like it's moving along.
They're still saying that November of, of two thousand eighteen, they're gonna be open. They're, they're steady getting it and they believe that November two thousand eighteen, there will be cars on the road. So I, I don't doubt it, they're, they are moving some dirt out there.
Yeah, it, it's been amazing to me, since we live right there, to watch the amount of changes went on and man, it's, it's, I think it's just phenomenal.
It is.
I mean, you go up, you know, Indian Trail Ferry Road and you look right, one day there's dirt and the next day there's blacktop. You can say, wow, this is phenomenal. Cause I can remember when we built them and I was a kid, they built the interstates and I used to think how fast that went, which it did. But this is really, once they got this thing rolling, it's just been phenomenal. And all these new offshoot roads that are going in, that's what's really cool is to see, you know, what they did on, on stints and harnesses. You know, so many things how that's.
Is that open now?
Oh, yeah. And I mean, it's just, it's beautiful. I mean, everything is just, it's amazing how it's fallen into place. That we can get our zoning done and do all the things we need to do to be ready. The, I just, it's to me, I, I, it's amazing to watch.
We're working towards that. We are, have our second, um, that's the, that's obviously the Indian Trail, um, small area plans. We're working towards getting those in place. And just so you're aware too, as far as the bypass, um, there are a number of new roads being created and roads that have been disconnected that we have to rename. So we have rename roads and rename roads. And last night, the county commissioners held a public hearing to do nineteen of those that are in the county's jurisdiction. Municipalities have a bunch that they have to do. And once those are approved by the state, then we'll, those folks will have new addresses. They will have to change their, they'll have to change their driver's license, they'll have to change everything.
Sure, they're thrilled.
They'll have new addresses. And now, I'm gonna tell you what.
That's good.
Change some, change someone's road name, that makes people unhappy, there's.
Kinda heard about it last night, right? Right?
We are, that, that's an interesting process.
Move somebody's kid out to another school.
When they get Providence Road done, they gonna, they're gonna change it to are you happy now?
Well, yeah, speaking of that, though, their, their whole railroad extension is gonna have a huge impact on Weddington Road because of the way that's gonna be reconfigured.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if we have a timeframe on when that's even gonna begin.
About that one, I can ask Bjorn if he can give us an update.
Yeah, that's gonna be another nightmare.
Yeah, I think. Goes right, right through the side of our, our neighborhood.
Thanks, Brian, appreciate that, uh, update. Uh, we asked for an addition to the agenda. Uh, for those of you that were not here last, uh, meeting, we had a very interesting, uh, two very interesting, uh, uh, zoning issues. One was agriculture or an agribusiness, that was lawn and garden. And, uh, about, I'd say a week ago, two weeks ago, Brian called me and he said, hey, he said, Commissioner, uh, Helms would like you to attend as representative from the planning board at, uh, December fourth meeting, uh, on the two pieces of property that were in question. And no other guidance other than just attend and be prepared if I was asked a question. And, uh, basically, the big question about the agribusiness, I thought, was the landfill. That was, that had the most talk and we had discussed it quite a bit. You guys did a great job. And so, uh, uh, hey, damn you, problem, of course, that vote was a unanimous vote.
And then, oh, you're talking about for the, for planning board, yeah?
Planning board.
Yeah, with the planning board, it was unanimous vote. Now, there's no vote taken last night. They just, you know, had the hearing on it. Then, uh, they went on to what, uh, is called the Truffle Plaza. And that was a one point five four acres. Y'all remember that?
Little white house.
Little white house, that's right. And I'll tell you, you would've thought it was a mansion last night and, uh, and all.
Warm buffet view, I believe, Mr. Boy, Brother Charles.
Uh, but anyway, uh, wanted to make you aware that, uh, they were extremely, extremely well represented. Somewhere between seventy and eighty houses in that particular subdivision. Uh, it's called Chat, Chatham?
Chatsworth.
Chatsworth, okay, alright. Uh, and they were represented by Melody Cox, legal counsel out of Waxall. She had a presentation. And then, uh, they had about three speakers, uh, two of the speakers spoke at our meeting. Uh, three, three of the speakers, uh, spoke at our meeting. Uh, then one speaker, uh, was the new HOA chairman or president of HOA, whatever you wanna call him. And his wife's dad used to be on the board up here. Swinson, Swanson, something like that.
Did you say Storans?
Pardon?
Storans? What?
I don't remember, but anyway, he, he brought that up. But, uh, he, uh, he said, uh, the planning board challenged, it was no representatives for our subdivision. So we made sure tonight that we had everybody here. Like I said, they had about fifty, fifty percent, they all stood up and they took the majority of this side and probably half of that side. And, uh, then he got up and he, uh, he said, and the other thing I want, want you to know that we don't appreciate is the comments made by the planning board. Uh, and I gotta be upfront with you, I don't recall anything being said. Uh, if I did, I couldn't tell you who, who said it, but there was comments, one of them was about buyer's remorse, was that right?
Yeah.
I made that comment.
Okay. And then, uh, there was, what else was it? Oh, about the people, n- nobody showing up.
Yeah.
And, uh, and all. And so I wanted to bring this up just to let everybody know that, uh, uh, this is happening because we probably can expect this in maybe January or February.
Well, uh, as far as a vote from the commissioner?
Well, no, you brought up.
Next parcel that's coming.
Oh, the next parcel.
The next two parcels is coming up.
To you in January.
Right.
We anticipate January.
Yeah. And, uh, and all, so I wanna make everybody aware that this is hot on the, I mean, they, they went and visited with the guy that had the sign shop about that there was, he didn't have any traffic and I thought, well, I would never have brought that up. And, and all, and they brought up traffic, they brought e- up everything that you could think of and, uh, and all, so. Brian, do you have any comments on this or anything?
Uh, and, and, you know, again, one of the, everyone's entitled to their opinion. And, and obviously, the, the residents out there were not happy about the use and, and no matter, you're gonna find that no matter where you go. Usually, when you're rezoning a piece of property near someone, someone's not gonna like that. And they, they spoke their, their mind and their, their piece. The commissioners will have to make a decision. Um, you know, I think when it comes to the planning board, you guys just have to, um, vote your conscience. If you think it's the right use on that piece of property, then, you know, whether or not people support it or don't support it, you vote your conscience. And that's all you're, that's, that's what you're appointed to do. If it's the wrong thing to do, then vote it down. We don't take it personally one way or the other. If we're recommending approval and you guys deny it, it's okay, it doesn't hurt our feelings. We're just here to be a resource for you.
I want everybody to know that, that Brian really represented us well. He made comment to the board and to the, the audience that it was a tough decision on the Truffle property. And, uh, he mentioned that it was a three to one vote. And, uh, he, uh, he also told the, the, uh, board that if they wanted to turn it down, it's their prerogative, just like what he said just a minute ago. Uh, and I think, uh, I, I don't know which way it'll go, but I thought the interesting thing was that he did highlight and had the map showing that commissioners in the next, whatever time ever, there's gonna be this property and this property come up and, and all. So it, it's hot on everybody's mind and I wanna make you aware. And then the other thing was, uh, did we have enough information about the land use to make a vote on that? Cause they brought up land use, the, the homeowners did, about neighborhood centers, is that right?
I thought it was excellent the way it was presented.
I think there's a.
Was there a misconception?
Well, again, their interpretation of, of our comprehensive plan is that, that because this is very small and it's on the outer edge, that it's not consistent with our comprehensive plan. They're, again, they're entitled to their opinion, but, uh, the land use plan is a guide. It's not a, it's not an ordinance, it's not a mandate. And when it talks about a typical faci, typical neighborhood center being thirty thousand square feet to a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, it doesn't mean that it can't be less than that or more than that. That's just the typical size. And I think they wanted to argue that there's already a lot of stuff out there and coming because Marvin has a piece that is, at some point in time, going to be developed. It has a commercial component to it. So I think their argument really was, well, it exceeds that hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot if you add up all that. So therefore, it's not consistent with the plan. The, the plan doesn't mandate that it has to be a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, it can be more or less. What it really boils.
Well, that was discussed during our, our meeting. I mean, that, that was brought up during our planning board meeting.
Absolutely.
And they, I mean, they literally wanted to draw the, the line at an exact location. Um, I was actually contacted and, and I didn't meet with the gentleman, but I did, um, have an email conversation with him. He was questioning, um, cause I, I obviously was the one that voted no. Um, he was questioning why I made the decision to vote no and I explained to him, um, you know, these, these are the issues that I, I had. Um, and while I, I, and I said it at the meeting and I said it again to him that I don't have any proof and I don't have any facts, but my thinking, my logic was, was that the developer would have obviously tried to approach them about the property, to purchase that piece of property because of its location and proximity in Chatsworth, I said, and, and, you know, as a landowner, they have a right to sell or not sell when an opportunity comes along. And as I, I explained to him, I said, sometimes when you miss an opportunity, you miss an opportunity. And if they, they chose not to sell, then so be it. That, you know, that was their opportunity. So if that's what they're referencing, again, it wasn't a dig against the property owner. I mean, it was, um, a comment that was nothing more than my opinion. And, you know, um, as I explained to him, I said, you know, there, there were several other factors for my no vote. I think what he was trying to do was use my no vote as fodder for their, you know, their defense. But, um, you know, I think, I think the reality is, is that, and as I said to him, I said, I, I personally, I think the land is essentially a useless piece of land, except for maybe a, you know, uh, you know, um, an annexation to the, the subdivision or an annexation to one of the property owners' existing land or maybe a fruit stand or something, but it doesn't have a lot of commercial value because of, of where it is. That being said, um, and to your point, Don, the next piece of land a quarter mile up the street is a totally different scenario. And because we voted a certain way on one, does not guarantee that we're gonna vote a certain way or the same way on the next one.
And I'm glad you brought that up, Robert, because I, I, I stressed this to the, the board as well. When, when we present something to you, um, we look at a lot of different factors. When we give you our recommendation, the land use plan and its consistency is merely only one piece of it. And so it doesn't have to be consistent with the land use plan for us to still recommend in favor of it or recommend against it. It really depends on other stuff as well. So that's, when things come to you, there's gonna be times when we'll say, well, it's really not consistent with the land use plan, but here's why we think it is still a good idea. Or it is consistent with the land use plan and here's why we still think you, you should not approve it. So don't be surprised if that happens in the future.
Right. Yeah, and, and I, I try to take every, every one of these as in a bubble, I mean, kinda look at them and their own merits. Um, you know, and I briefly looked at, at the one that's gonna be coming up. Um, and depending upon what, what happens and, and what's presented, it may go. Um, and depending upon what, what happens and, and what's presented, it may go a totally different way, or it may go the same way. But we, you know, that, that's a decision that I think is really, you know, for us at the time of the meeting, and, and after listening to what's being said and being presented with all the facts. Um, so I, I would hope that any of the residents that might've been at that meeting or at last, last month's meeting, don't assume, because they did bring it up, oh, you've got another one coming, um, that they don't assume that, um.
It'll get approved or won't get approved.
Right, that, that it'll, it'll follow the same fate. Um, so.
I'm glad you brought that up as well, the board. If you're being contacted by any applicants, um, we encourage you to talk to the applicants or even the adjacent property owners, 'cause that's how you gain additional information about an upcoming, um, project. What we ask is that you don't, do not take a position. Don't tell them you support it, don't tell them that you, because really, you shouldn't make your decision until the night that all the information's presented.
Right.
From the adjacent property owners, from the applicant, from staff, then you make your decision and give your opinion. Um, there's absolutely nothing wrong with telling them what concerns you have. If you look at it and say, well, I have a concern about this, you didn't take a position and say, I will support it, I won't support it, you just say, this concerns me, you might wanna look at that. There's nothing wrong with doing that as well. So the only other thing that we recommend is, if you do have contact with the applicant, um, just let the board know at the, at the beginning of the meeting, hey, I spoke to the applicant here. I, you know, I, I, my mind is not made up, I'm here to listen and make a decision. You're good to go, you're fine with that.
The applicant has been making conscious efforts to contact us all.
And, and again, we, we usually recommend they do that. We tell them they should call the county commissioners, we tell them they should call the planning board. Because, again, ultimately, if a project is going to get, let's say, approved, um, I think it's a better project if someone looks at it and says, well, these are the things we'd like you to address. We try to catch things, but we don't always catch them. There may be other issues if it's going to get turned down. You know, someone might understand more why it's getting turned down from that. So I, it's not a bad idea to talk to these individuals, as long as you're just not taking a position.
Well, and having a concern about a, a piece of property doesn't necessarily mean that if they address the concern, that it goes away. I mean, there are certain issues that can't be addressed adequately. Um, so expressing a concern, I mean, I had a, a meeting today with a gentleman, um, about another piece of property, and, you know, and I explained to him, these, these are the things that I'd be looking at, um, and I, and I made it very clear to him that, you know, again, I'm not giving you approval or telling you that I will approve the project, I'm just telling you, you know, here's what I see, and, and here are my recommendations, uh, but my decision won't be made until, you know, until the, the meeting is held. Um, and, and it was actually, you know, I think it was productive for both of us, because, like you said, I was able to gain information about the project and, you know, at the same time, give him some feedback on where the, the, the project was, was headed, and kinda how they, you know, they can better present, you know, their, their project. Um, so it was actually kinda fun.
Very good.
I think the end result is that, to all of you that are up here, that I felt as a chair, very good about the way things turned out last night, because what was explained by Brian, what we said, et cetera, did not necessitate me having to make a comment, 'cause he's much more eloquent than I am. And I certainly couldn't tell what each one of you said at that meeting. But, uh, I just want everybody to be aware that, uh, for whatever reason, Everett, I don't know if you were ever asked to be at a commissioner's meeting?
Nah, if you, if you demonstrate, you know, your animosity, you're wanting to be invited back. That's all I'm gonna say.
It's alright, okay. You know, I just want everybody to know about that. Is any other comments? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Planning board comments?
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
Merry Christmas as well.
Everett, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Good, ayes have it, we are officially adjourned.
Let me turn the, uh, all the audio video off here real quick.